It was the very last page of the county's status. They've got May 21.
You ready? How do we see folk?
Oh, yeah.
Doc, what's up?
It's about the Centers of Blood.
Those shoes, those are super cute.
We want to order the June 30th, 2025 meeting of the Mayor and Alderman in the town of Mont Eagle. Your guidance and search for all for the blessing.
I, Father Guinness, afternoon. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve. We just thank you for our town and all that is transpiring here. We pray that you give us wisdom in the decisions that must be made. We just ask your guidance on our first responders, police, firemen, EMS people. And we just thank you for the upcoming celebration of our country. We look forward to seeing people in town and enjoying fellowship one with the other. We just ask a blessing on this meeting now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge the citizens' flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite as we are.
Here. Where is it? Here.
Okay. You have the minutes in the packet. Let's approve one at a time. The public hearing of May 19th, is there a motion to accept the minutes is submitted?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the May 19th public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minister approved. Minutes of the May 19th Marion Alderman meeting. Those minutes have been distributed to you. Is there a motion to accept as submitted?
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minister approved. Any other questions? Okay. Citizens' comments. Any comments which should be heard at this time? Okay. Mayor's communications. I have a thing or two. First of all, thank you for attending the Memorial Day observation, those that made it, those that saw it or heard about it. It was a really good crowd for a Monday holiday, so it's something that we will continue. The upcoming July 4th parade will form at the flea market near McDonald's at the 134 area, and we'll step off at 10 o'clock. So we form at 9:00 and leave at 10:00. We have a couple of entries. The Shriners will be back, but I received a phone call from both of the Military Museum, and they're going to have some military vehicles there. They will be first because their Nationals do not allow throwing of candy because they don't want any accidents or problems. So that's why they're in the front of the parade, both the Shriners and the military vehicles. After that, we'll fall in by order. Kyle Collins will be there to line us up at 9:00, and we'll step off at 10:00. The first responders event that they had May 31st seemed to be very successful and well-intended, and it's my understanding that they will continue that in the years to come as they are able. And finally, the sidewalk lights, for those that noticed at night. We put up three test ones, which is down lighting only, and it's a completely different look and glow than what we have now in town. The beautification committee of Imagine Mont Eagle has approved them, and I believe some of the Aldermen have looked at them and approved them, so later on, we will approve those purchases. It's down lighting for the sidewalk area only. Sometimes we talk about other pole lighting. That's the lighting on the poles that's approaching Valley Electric Maintenance. So the poles that I'm talking about now are the sidewalk lights that are basically on the greenway and out front here. So that's all I have. Calendar events, you know, the next meeting is July 28th, which is the last Monday of the month, and of course, the July 4th parade. So, Police Department clear reporting.
Citizens, Mont Eagle.
Good afternoon. All right, we're going to go through this, just the stats fairly quickly. Stats look actually pretty good. So we're going to go to, we had one driving on Rovoka suspended. We did five domestic calls, none of which that were seriously bodily injury, but, you know, in light of what's going on in the world right now, people get a little upset with each other at home, so that goes up. We're able to deal with that quickly. We had two drug-related cases, two trespassing cases, two thefts, of which I would like to report that. Both those thefts were solved in the same day with three arrests, two different individuals, which I'm pretty happy about. We had a total of 352 calls for service this month. Last month, it was 379. We had 10 crashes. That's up to from last month, which was eight. And we got a total of 66 traffic stops, with 56 of those being warnings, basically stop signs and things of that nature, making sure we tell people to not be on the phones while they're driving, so distract your driving and things of that nature. So as far as that goes, that's where we're at with that. One thing I do want to address, okay, and this is for everyone here, for everyone's safety, you know, if you're not a law enforcement officer, don't openly carry a firearm, okay? You're not supposed to have a firearm in here because it's for the safety of the citizens. You know, someone could get really upset really quickly, and then if I don't know you got a gun, you know, it could, you know, go bad from there. So I just ask that, read the door, no firearms in the building, okay? This is a courtroom, or actually, it's a town hall. It's a town hall meeting room, not a courtroom today. Also, too, it's getting extremely warm outside. We all have animals, and I know some people leave their animals outside, okay? I understand that. Let's just be mindful to make sure that their water bowls have water in them, they have the ability to get to the water and have the ability to get to shade. And also, too, just, you know, be mindful that if you're tired or if you're at home, if it's 100 degrees outside with heat index, that water's probably pretty warm, kind of change it out a little bit, you know? It's just something I would ask. I've had several calls for that. I get it, we forget, but it is pretty hot outside, and it's just going to get hotter outside as far as that goes. We have issued 14 citations. They're city ordinances into court for truck drivers that are parked, I'm not going to say illegally, but where they're not supposed to. And the reason we're doing them into our ordinance is so that it doesn't affect their CDL standings, you know? Someone pulls up, well, I didn't see that seven signs there. Well, they still get, you know, cited into our court system, but it's not going against their driving record. So that's all I have for that.
Well, two comments quickly. I know from truck driver, people that I've known over the years, they have to stop at a certain time.
They do.
So it's almost where they stop, but you're absolutely correct in your report, so we should continue to monitor that. The other thing, it's been on the news a lot, to follow up on your comment about pets, also children in cars that some people forget, and there have been deaths over time throughout the country, so it's just something to be aware of, this very severe heat. This seems to be record-breaking, one of the hottest years around. It's May, was one of the wettest, they tell me, but the heat is serious, and it doesn't take long for heat stroke or dehydration or any of those other medical terms. So thank you for bringing those to our attention, they're very important. Alderman, any questions with the police chief?
Yeah, Chief, one, just one question about overtime. I just wanted to see if you could explain to everybody, like, what type of situation that you guys run into would warrant overtime for your department?
Oh, wow, that's going to be various situations. Our main one is going to be courts. Anytime we make an arrest or whatever, we've got court dates in it. For us, it's the first Tuesday of every month for Grundy, and I think maybe the first or second Wednesday of the month for Marion County. And some officers, they might be, they might sit in court for eight hours, but most of the time, it's four hours. That's going to be the main course of why we use overtime. The other one would be if they have to stay over for, you know, a call, if they're working a current call. Or let's say I've got someone on vacation, and I don't have anyone to cover that, then that overtime would be there. But I think the way that I've got the shifts figured out right now, as far as that goes, we've eliminated a lot of that expenditure, but I don't really have an overtime per se to look at because the way that's, and Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, the way that ours is, is it's generalized in one line item, correct, that's going to be payroll with, so I try to keep any unnecessary hours down, so.
Excuse me, let me interrupt here. I'm planning a workshop, which I have not announced yet, I don't have the date until I talk to the accountant, but we're going to look at, based on other comments, we're going to look at all the overtime for all the departments as it applies, so there'll be a point in time where we do that in the workshop, probably early fall, depending on the accountant's schedule.
Okay, and do you approve every pay period or every month or whatever it is? Do you approve the overtime, or do you look and know it and give a thumbs up that yes, this is legitimate, this is not?
Correct, yes, sir. I look at the hours, and I just go back and make sure that those officers are working those hours and while they worked them, sign off on it, and it goes to Debbie every other Monday, I do believe.
Okay. All right, thanks. Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Any other questions from the Alderman?
Yes. Update us on the homeless count?
So, yes, have made contact. It is, obviously, it is private property, so we're two different, we're at a standstill right now. I've not been given permission to say you can't be on the property, but they are willing to have someone put up no trespassing signs, okay, which they can do that. I would not recommend the city to do that because it might put you in some kind of liability down the road, but if the property owner says yes, they're going to put it up, then we can do that, then I can go say, hey, you can't be there. Now, they're not going to go there, where are they going to go at now? So, you know, I'm just moving, I'm moving people around, so most likely, what will happen is there will be no trespassing signs put up unless the property is sold. So I don't know, and I think the mayor was looking into that as well, but as of right now, with it still being private property, I cannot go on there and tell them to vacate. Now, once I've gotten permission from the landowner to say, yes, go ahead and kick anyone off of there, we're going to put signs up, then yes, I can go say, hey, you're not allowed to be here, you have to move. If you come back, it's criminal trespass, you go to jail.
The situation at Pilot out there with the traffic sometimes, it's horrible. They jam up.
They do.
And the people can't come into town, I mean, it's just blocked.
Right.
Do we need to get to Pilot and have a sit-down with them, or it's not getting any better?
Absolutely. So I spoke with the general manager, she's extremely nice, however, that was my suggestion two weeks ago, that, because basically, what she said was, is Pilot really doesn't care. And I said, well, maybe they will care if the board got involved or the mayor got involved, and we could all have a sit-down and figure out how we best remedy this. So I do believe that would be the best course of action.
We will, and I have followed up with T-Duck. I've gotten some comments from them. They're concerned this is the highway, not Sampley or Forside or any city road, so when I get there finally, we work, we will sit down with Pilot, we'll sit down with Pilot.
Because it, and I may interject, it's not a matter of if, but it is a matter of when, you know, a serious accident will occur there. So, and I expressed that to her as well, so.
Like, we need to go up the ladder another?
Correct, correct.
Okay. That's all I have for this. Thank you.
That's it.
Fire Department?
You're welcome.
We've got 32 calls for the month on the Fire Department. I've given mayor a breakdown of all the calls that we've ran for the month, so that we disperse, I guess, through you guys for the Alderman, so you can review it. EMR program's been completed, all the members have passed the class in-house with the states, and now they're eligible for the National Registry, so all that's being scheduled. I think the EMS coordinator will be up hopefully sometime within the week and get some dates and times registered for them. The ladder truck has got the hydraulics put back on it, and we're waiting on the external hydraulic lines, so it's put back.
Progress.
Yeah. The engine and the tank, I'll cover this. So we was responding to a call last week off on I-24 around the 138 mile marker, and it was a tractor trailer hauling a lowboy, heavy equipment. He'd blow the motor, which is a common thing that we run into. We ran over the motor parts in the road going to tractor trailers, so all six tires was cut off of our fire truck. So we got it back up here. We took it to the tire shop for evaluation, and we also took the other, we took the tanker truck, both tires was cut off of the tanker truck. Steer tires had to be replaced, those have to be virgin tires, so in all, it was about $6,500. But the good news is, is that goes to the fire recovery system, the third-party recovery agency that we use, that's been submitted through their recovery claim, so that's, should be taken care of by their, the tractor trailer party's insurance, so there's that. About all I've got on the Fire Department. This was thrown together tonight, we've been on a fire, so I walked in right before.
Any questions with the Fire Chief on the district?
I would just request that you update us when that reimbursement has been?
Yep. That usually puts that in your report when we get the reimbursements in for intake. Sometimes it's a month, sometimes it's three months, it just depends on their progress with the insurance.
Travis, your department, I'm going back to the overtime question again, your department doesn't have any, but do you foresee any situations where overtime would be warranted within your department? Because I know you guys make calls off-hours and stuff.
So most of my guys, AJ's a part-time guy, so he's not really, you know, he doesn't go into the overtime thing. Myself, I'm salaried, I take overtime serious, I kind of, I'm an ex-state employee, so I use flex time. If I feel like I need some overtime hours, I'd rather go home for a little bit, so I don't do overtime.
Okay. Thanks.
So codes enforcement, AJ's taken up from the fire, he's not here, he's trying to get an engine back together. We're done with the fence placement issue on Boswell Court, that has paperwork typed up, we're going to address that, and basically, boils down to the fences placed on the wrong direction for public view or the neighbor's view and all that, so that's being dealt with. Forest Street Residence, we're done with codes, code files with the landlord, the landlord's pursuing an eviction, and he's going to roll into the, I guess, the property is horrendous, so he's going to roll in all of our complaints that we've been and dealt with with the codes department and take that, and that's going to a county court level for an eviction for his tenant. That's been probably 15 days, and I know, I think, well, it's 30 days on the eviction, so I don't know where that's going to go. He asked for the files, and that's as far as I've went with it, and I've not heard any report back from him. Trash on the grease collectors over behind the old Dixie Lee, where the Dixie Lee restaurant was, there's two grease collectors sitting over there, the property owner's well aware of it, that I think the drivers kind of get out and throw their, set their garbage on top of it, thinking it's trash cans. We've dealt with it twice already, so this is, you know, we're back meeting trash hauls. And we've been going around, there's a food truck in town that doesn't have proper licensing, so we, while we're doing that, we've kind of went to all the food trucks and we're checking proper license and renewals, making sure they're up to date on their renewals. So that's where we're at with codes, any questions for that?
Building inspections?
Building inspections, there are six permits issued right now, or I'm sorry, there are six inspections completed, two commercial along with some follow-ups. I'm going to touch briefly on the Mountain Inn, I'm not going to elaborate, but June the 12th was our six-month period for our city ordinance for cleanup and remediations. They've submitted to the BCA board, which will be heard in July, but odds and ends will be addressed. I don't want to elaborate too deep on that, but we'll elaborate in the BCA meeting on that.
Excuse me, I did not announce that BCA is tomorrow at 3:30 Central Time to discuss that issue.
And for building permits issued. Questions on the building inspection side?
Yes, sir, it is. How do you, like every structure fire you have, I'm referring to like the Mountain Inn?
Yes.
The six-month period thing. On structure fires, residential and commercial, do you notify that property owner?
Yep.
Of that regulation?
Normally, if it's a prolonged effect, yes. I'll say something, you know, if we just sit there and let it go dormant and they don't clean it up, I'll say, hey, you know, there's an ordinance, just a friendly reminder, hey, we got an ordinance in place, you know, six months, if you don't have that cleaned up or remediated, we may have to look deeper into it. Usually, it's pretty compliant, there's one over on North Bluff, I'm sure you're familiar where I'm talking, it's the foundation sitting there, that it's physically impossible to get a hold of that property. There have been certified letters and all kinds of stuff go out, so some of them slipped through the crack, other of them, but most of them's compliant.
But that goes from the time of the fire, not from the time you're?
That's right. The date of the fire is six months out, is the way I interpret it, play it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Parks and Recreation, you don't have anything on that? Okay. Utility? John, anything?
I don't have any, Mrs. Council's got something.
Any Alderman have questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. What's our position, the town line-up position on, do we still do fluoride injection at the water plant, water treatment plant?
As far as I know. Have a good day.
Who's, can you, who's in charge of the water plant?
The Whitman Street, it's a plant operator.
Plant operator.
That's an issue that's recently been in the news, that we're seeing what they decide, it may be as high as EPA. I don't know.
Recently, they said it's going to be up to local water systems, and I'm not for against, I'm just bringing it up because it's been on the news.
Right.
R.F.K. says it's killing all the kids, but Dennis say they love it, so I just feel like it's something we need to take action on in the very near future and get it out of the way.
Okay, I'll look into that through. Thank you.
So, John, if, I was under the impression that you were in charge of sewer and water, but I'm hearing that that may not be true.
I don't want to.
Okay. For the sewer department, then, do you, can you kind of explain what might be a cause or an incident or something for the use of overtime?
Well, they got several mechanical things in there if they get called out, we got a call-out system.
That's mostly distribution? Distribution mostly?
No, it's for the plant itself.
For the plant, okay.
Yeah. For both plants, isn't it, John? Water and sewer. Surely sewer, you're a sewer. Yeah. And water as well.
See that.
That's why I say we'll discuss it when we get all the information.
I'm just curious, you know, if, so do you approve any type of overtime within the sewer department and all? Is that something that you approve, the timeframe?
If they get called out during the night calling in at the plant?
Yeah.
They tell me the next day, they've got their own time card down there, they keep up their time.
Okay.
I think week before, last two weeks ago, it had a actuator valve went out, they'd had them operate the one side of the plant by hand. They got a lot of overtime in. They got 50 call-outs in a week.
And if there's a, if there's an incident with distribution, or the collection system, I guess, in off-hours or something, does that call come to you, or does it come to?
Most times, it comes to me. The calls come to me after 4:00.
Okay.
And if we have a lack of water leak or something, I call, get whoever, and get a hold of it, go out to piece the leak.
So water system distribution comes to you also?
Yes.
Those calls after hours?
Yep.
Okay, you don't approve anybody's overtime or anything?
No, not many, as far as I know, no.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions with your utility manager?
Well, I, listen, what about the lake level? Is water still going over spillway, or?
Yeah, for the water.
Would it make sense for us, and maybe we can talk more about this in the workshop on overtime, but would it make sense for us to have all the representatives, all the department representatives here for these meetings?
Yes. I don't know for these meetings, that's my plans with the workshop, and then we can decide our policies.
I mean, when questions get brought up here and the people aren't, the right people aren't here to answer, it seems like?
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, I'm sure the board is running over before the rain, you've had, yes. Any other questions with your utilities? Street Department had no reports, occurs nothing. Planning Commission, out of courtesy, I understand, Mr. Leonard, you had something for us, you weren't here for citizens' comments, can you make your brief comment?
Yes, Mayor, I will make as brief as possible, I appreciate you.
Three minutes are left in this conversation.
Thank you. Recently, Steve Higgins, a deacon for Bishop Millsaps Church, had a RV parked at the church. He parked it there so that when he was here on the weekends, serving as the deacon and also helping Bishop Millsaps, who has become quite incapacitated, as anybody who knows him can see, and he was asked to remove that RV from the church grounds, and I'm not exactly sure what caused it, but nonetheless, he did as he was asked to do, once he was communicated with. There was some question as to whether he was there when they were trying to make contact with him, and the truth was, no, he was not. He has a home in Nashville, and he and his partner, lady friend, stay in Nashville until they come up here for him to serve the deacon, as deacon for the church on the weekends. They're either here from Friday to Sunday or Saturday to Sunday, depending upon the bishop's needs. I read your ordinance 536, but I also read your ordinance 530. Ordinance 530 says, "RV shall not be used for temporary or permanent occupancy outside of an improved campground, except as permitted in Section 536. This shall not prevent the occasional use of an RV on private property by the owners or their guests, provided that such use does not amount to a health or safety concern or constitute a nuisance to surrounding property owners." I contend that that accurately describes what is being used when that RV is there. He has moved it, for the time being, but they would like to have it back there to make it easier for him to serve and help Bishop Millsaps. Also, in 536, it says, "A temporary dwelling unit, TDU, is a detached dwelling unit permitted on a temporary basis as a means of relief from extraordinary or extenuating circumstances." Well, given the bishop's current physical state, I would say that he needs all the help he can get if he wants to continue to be at that church. Now, Section 530, "This should not prevent the occasional use of an RV on private property by the owners or the guests, provided that such use does not amount to a health or safety concern or constitute a nuisance to surrounding property owners." Well, I cannot imagine how it could be a nuisance when they only stay there either Friday to Sunday or Saturday to Sunday, and they are not partying, they is there as a deacon to the church. The property is neither commercial nor residential, from my understanding, unless somebody has a better distinction or definition. It is my contention that this second sentence of A of under 530 will have to be stricken from this city's ordinance in its entirety if this honorable ward and mayor truly wish to prevent Mr. Higgins from staying in this RV on the occasional basis as specified. If it is not stricken, then Mont Eagle is violating its own ordinance by denying Mr. Higgins the ability to use his RV at the church on an occasional basis. It does not constitute a health or safety risk, nor does it constitute a nuisance to the surrounding property.
Excuse me, Mr. Leonard?
Yes, is my time over? The bottom line is, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission, I mentioned BCA is tomorrow at 3:30. The Planning Commission meeting is tomorrow at 4:00 Central Time. Beautification and tree board?
We submitted a grant request to the T-Mobile Hometown, Grant Request, today was the deadline, and I worked with the Tennessee Economic Development Group in Chattanooga, where it wouldn't have been done. Grant, it does not include the entire city for wireless, it's going to be at the two parks. Doing the whole thing would have been over $50,000. So, we broke it down to those two public areas where people generally are most there, and then maybe we can find another grant that would work. We would have to work with every single business in town to, they said, in order to, there's something about triangulation of the businesses, and getting that approval before the grant request was due was impossible to do. So, it includes beautification of the front of the library, computers in the library, and the two places.
So this will be open Wi-Fi, this will be open Wi-Fi in the two parks then?
Yes.
For anybody to use, okay. And is it include, is it, do they have to put towers up, or is this, how would they, what's the physical structure that would?
My understanding, in Harton, we're going to have to put in one pole next to one of the electric poles, because we can't put it on the Saquatch Valley, so it'd be next to that. And I think we can come off either the library or the pavilion, where we already have electricity there. And the other thing that we're going to have to be working on is, we're getting more requests for people wanting to do things in the greenway, so we're going to have to come up with a plan of what can and cannot be done in the greenway. Otherwise, it's going to be a mess trying to deal with everybody's requests.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, Grant, Imagine Mont Eagle?
Yeah, so, first thing I want to do, I'm not sure how well this has really been explained to the public, so I want to try my best to just give a really fast overview of Imagine Mont Eagle. Imagine Mont Eagle is not trying to change Mont Eagle, it is not trying to make it something that we have not been for 40 years, or 50 years, or 100 years, or anything like that. We're not, we're not trying to turn ourselves into, you know, Melrose Avenue or anything like that. Imagine Mont Eagle is really striving to find some continuity within the city in how we organize our businesses, and how we organize our spaces, and how we can best benefit the people that live here, as well as attract tourists. So, we're not changing Mont Eagle, as a matter of fact, we're probably trying to get Mont Eagle back to what it was 40 years ago, or 30 years ago, where this was actually kind of a thriving town with a lot more businesses than there are here. So, just so everybody here and also watching at home, you know, understands that Imagine Mont Eagle is not out to change anything, we are just trying to improve a few things here, and get Mont Eagle back, back kind of to where it was, with some modern-day improvements and all, so just don't want everybody to be afraid of the term Imagine Mont Eagle and think that we're bringing in all these outsiders, and we're going to make it look like their own hometown, that they just left to come here. A couple of things, we, the Steering Committee met last month, earlier this month, and to, we met with, we met with the Subcommittee Chairs to get their ideas about what type of projects that they are looking at, which would be tourism, beautification, which includes tree and art, and then the Economic Development Group. So we are, we met with them to try and understand a little bit of what their priorities are, and they had, some of them had a very long list of priorities, we've asked them to narrow it down. The intent is, by mid-August, those Subcommittee would present to the Steering Committee their list of maybe top three to five priorities that we can, that the Steering Committee, along with Subcommittee's, can sit down and address and look at, okay, is this something that needs to be funded by a grant? Is this something that needs to be private donation funded, you know, go do some fundraising? Or is this something that the city can contribute to? Those priorities will be presented to the Council here in the August meeting, for everybody to kind of discuss where we, how we get these projects off the ground, and what's going to initiate them. So, that's coming down the line. We've got another Steering Committee meeting, I believe, scheduled for this month, or, excuse me, for July, where again, we'll be meeting with, and I know that we'll be meeting with the Subcommittee Chairs, but also the Subcommittee's have their own meetings coming up in July as well. I would encourage still, any, anybody in the community that wants to be a part of this, either one, any of these Subcommittee's, to please reach out to either myself, Ivan Michelle, or Martha Anne, and then for the Economic Development Committee, it's John Clark. You can come to me, I can give you all their in-contact information for anybody that wants to volunteer and get involved in some of the Subcommittee's.
Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
There is a form on the website that people can sign up.
Okay, good, and what's the website for everybody's purposes? Okay, look for the TownofMonteagle.gov website if you want to jump in, but you can also contact me, I'd be glad to point you in the right direction and whatnot. There's been a lot of great things happening, there's a lot of great ideas coming out. I'll repeat again that the sign, the school, Mont Eagle Elementary School sign was kind of one of the first initiatives of Imagine Mont Eagle. I don't know if anybody has seen the new sign, it looks great, we had a great foundation built for it, so there are some things that are moving along, and we want everybody's input on it, so feel free to reach out and join any of these Subcommittee's. That's all for Imagine Mont Eagle, although, to follow on what you said, Martha, about the greenway space, we are, that's one of the tasks that the Steering Committee and the Subcommittee is going to be looking at, of proposing some ideas on how, what language we might use to describe what the greenway should be used for, and what it should not be used for, just so we can, we can get that nailed down. That's one of the, one of the tasks that we'll be presenting to the City Council in the near term. That's it, thank you.
Any questions with Imagine Mont Eagle? Holderman comments? Dean, do you have anything?
Well, I was going to go last this time.
Okay. Dan, do you have anything? Grant?
I do have a couple of things, sorry, I didn't know I was going to have to do this right after talking about Imagine Mont Eagle, so you got to listen to my voice a little bit longer. Mayor was wondering, do we have a timeframe for putting in, for putting meters in for the sewage that we talked about with Travis? We were looking at, there was going to be a meter put in at Deboz, Ingram Road and First Street, I think.
I have to follow up, he was waiting for a wet time after the work was done, and he was on vacation this past week, so I'll find out when we're putting meters in, based on weather, so we get effective readings.
Okay, and that, we'll just need to talk through that with the, I don't think those are budget items quite approved yet, for the next year, if I remember correctly. Okay, if you could follow up, thank you. Also, the other thing, we talked last month, or maybe, and the month before, about the INI project with the sewer, that's the infiltration of rainwater into our sewer system, that's pushing our plant to capacity. I just wanted to say, because this wasn't made clear before, but the engineer came to us and showed us a bunch of data and a bunch of graphs and stuff about how, what the reduction was from finishing Phase One of this INI project, and it was pretty significant. I think it was somewhere to the neighborhood of 40% effective that we, or 40% reducing INI in the system, that, don't quote me on that number, but it was pretty close. And I think in the past, when we talked about INI, there was a lot of shrugging and going, I don't even know if it worked or anything, but I just want to let you know that according to the data, the Phase One INI project actually did a lot of good, and it was money well-spent. And the Phase Two that is coming up should get us to, I think, all but four or five of the list of places that needed renovation to keep the water from seeping into the sewage, and those five or six that were going to be left over are a little bit larger projects, and not as significant as the ones that we're going to be covering. So by the end of Phase Two, this is going to be a significant cost savings for the city. It'll certainly take some pressure off of the current treatment plant that operates that capacity several different times throughout the year, depending on the weather. I just wanted to mention that the INI has worked, and I just wanted to make that clear for everybody that has listened in on the past and been uncertain whether that was money There was, there's been some discussion offline, this is nothing official from the city, about what to do with the ballpark property, and I know it's tied up with some deeds that have some restrictions in that, in it for a 99-year period, it has to be used for recreation. I just kind of wanted to take the temperature of everybody here in the Council. I've been speaking to, on my own, not on behalf of the mayor, anybody in the city, I've been speaking to a couple of the property owners, and looking at the deeds for the ballpark, and trying to figure out if it's possible to get a clean deed with that piece of property, that we could actually do a land swap with somebody, with another private owner here in town, to build a new ballpark, so we would give them the old ballpark to do what, a commercial business that they want to do, and us take over some property that's closer to City Hall here, that is within our civic area, and building a new ball field there, we were talking about a property swap. So, I just wanted to take the temperature of everybody on the Council, if, I've got a few more meetings to kind of get, collect some information before it gets officially presented to the Board, but I just kind of wanted to take the temperature of anybody here, if that's a path that we should definitely not be going down, or if it's okay me continuing to look into it.
We do want to start. Dan, do you have a comment?
I have several coming up. There'll be some legalities in reference to that, as you said, with the previous 100-year agreement, there were, the land was donated to the city for the use of a ballpark by certain people in town that owned it, and so we'd have to work through the parameters of all that.
And, yes, that's exactly right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to do right now, as a matter of fact, I'm.
I'm open to that.
Yeah, on my own time, on my own money, I'm meeting with a real estate attorney tomorrow, just to, just to talk to them about what the possibilities might be, in terms of getting a clean deed.
Well, I think after all is said and done, it's going to come down to what the original donors, or their heirs and successors, had intended for that piece of property. The last time it was discussed, it seemed to be great concern that it would remain a ballpark, number one. Number two, we got to leave the opinion saying, unless there's valid fees and et cetera, et cetera, and all the little things that went with it, that we'd not pursue that as any kind of swap. And even if we did all of that, I wonder to what end, as far as development costs, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a lot of work to be done, I'm not sure how it will go. I think out of respect, and just people donating to a specific cause, we should contact sooner or later, probably sooner rather than later, the heirs to those that donated that land.
Right, and which I.
Those are my comments, so it may be nice to get a real estate attorney involved at this time, but it's also nice to talk to the present heirs of that donation, the donor.
And I have to talk to the heirs of that, that's where, that's where this started, and I wouldn't have gone as far as I've gone without, without getting a head nod from them that said, yes, we would be interested in talking about this, so nobody's making quick.
I didn't know any of that.
No, that's fine, and again, I haven't, haven't revealed a lot of what I've already done, but I understand you're bringing up, these issues are all issues I'm aware of, and I'm going to, I'm going to work through, this may not be able to happen, but I want to pursue it. The, did we, another question, Mayor, did we address the process of the utility approvals for developers that got brought up by Mr. Fantuzzi a while back, the issues that he ran into?
Yes, we did, and Jonathan Rush at Southeast Tennessee Development has been advised that nothing can be approved until the utility engineer and the utility department approve it. So, with a specific case at hand, it's required by TDEC that filings be done on behalf of the town. I've asked the engineer to do those filings, he has done them, and we're waiting to hear back from TDEC.
Okay, and I'm probably is worried about the internal process that kind of collapsed on that one, where, where the person that was going to sign off on this wasn't made aware of any type of agreements that were made months previous?
I'm not sure there were any agreements made, there was a lot of conversation, none of which, as far as I'm concerned, any validity, other than conversation, but the internal process has been also addressed.
Okay.
Because nobody's doing anything until the engineer says yes or no, as far as taps on the line, water taps being installed, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay.
There are TDEC considerations, as you know, that have to be followed.
Right, and just according to his long letter complaint that we received from him, he was given, I don't know if it was handshakes or something else, but he was multiple times told that everything was okay, until it came down to the person signing, and then, that person was unaware of anything that was going on. So internally, if you say that you have addressed that, then that's good.
That's, yes, yes.
Okay. Debbie, did we ever follow up, were we able to follow up on the Airbnb, the taxes that we get, occupancy tax we get from Airbnb, were we ever able to put our finger on that? And is that something that we, I thought Stephanie also was going to potentially talk to the comptroller and look into that?
I'm sure she has a chance to do that, yeah.
Okay, all right, maybe I'll bring it up next month, whether we've done, but that's something I think we need to, to be able to put our finger on, to make sure that we're getting the money from the short rental platforms, if it's not a line item, that we're not getting a check for every month, and let's verify that we're actually getting paid for that, for that activity. One other, well, two of the things, thank you, Mayor, for the overtime workshop that you had mentioned, I think that is needed, I've got several questions of some, how department heads are looking at verifying and addressing overtime, I think it's a piece of our budget that we need to really look into a little better, and make sure that some of these departments that are charging a lot of overtime, if it's better to maybe hire some more people, or make sure that we manage better the work that's done during the week versus during overtime. So thanks for, thanks for putting that together, look forward to, look forward to that workshop coming up. One last thing, I wanted to ask about, this got brought up as part of the Imagine Mont Eagle Steering Committee the other day, but I wanted to ask the city about, take the temperature of the councilmen, and obviously, nothing's going to get decided tonight, but maybe in the, in this fall, we could look into it for the, as the budget year, new budget year begins, but take the temperature of what you guys thought about potentially having, potentially hiring somebody, and it could even be part-time, hiring somebody in the city that would be responsible for finding, chasing, and managing grants that the city could take advantage of, as well as the Imagine Mont Eagle group as well, because we will be, the Imagine Mont Eagle group will be having a, they'll be, we have a fundraising Subcommittee, and that person, who is the chair of that committee, will be looking at grants, private funding, and some other things for some of the initiatives and projects under Imagine Mont Eagle, and the thought came up, it wasn't my idea, it was somebody else's idea in the Steering Committee, but I thought it was worth exploring with the committee, but potentially, it would, it could benefit the city if we had somebody that was specifically designated for grant finding, for city projects, and maybe take a load off of some of your, some of the current administration, and that person could potentially also help the Imagine Mont Eagle group look for grants, manage grants, apply for, you know, fill out the applications and such. So I just wanted to kind of get a feel. So I just wanted to kind of get a feel if anybody feels like there's enough grant work potentially that the city could benefit from that would warrant hiring even, even if it's a part-time person.
Dean or Dan, any comments?
Uh, yeah, I, well, I had, go ahead if you want to.
I'll give that some thought.
In reference to...
I just, no, I would make a comment or two. Right now we use Southeast Development and they have been getting us grants and filing, but no matter what happens, it still comes to City Hall for administration for signatures and follow-up and filing inform reports. So it would take a coordinated effort. I'm not opposed to a grant writer as long as we outline specifically what they have to do once they find a grant. So it's something that I don't mind looking into.
Dean?
In reference to the grant thing, uh, grant, I would think that we need something like that simply, several reasons, but it would appear to me that we're competing against each other ourselves, only being eligible to apply for grants. And if we get one in category A, does that knock us out of B or C or on down the line? And I think the council needs to be made aware of the grants that have been filed in the name of the Town of Montagel and what potential effect it would have on other grant applications and have a priority system and go forward. And I think we need to be able to have better, a better understanding of where all that's coming from. So I would support studying that and trying to get that done. It makes sense to me. In reference to the ballpark issue there, I think we need to look at all options on city properties. And in this particular case, I think we need to, it's been talked about over the years several times, but it seems to get dropped. But if you look at the location of the ballpark today and what's around it, my biggest concern is the public safety factor for the children and parents and just fans coming to the ballpark. And I keep going back to the pilot thing out there. That out there is a nightmare. It's a disaster waiting to happen. And we need to, we need to look and see if there are options about the ballpark property being traded or relocated and work it out with the heirs and negotiate if possible a better solution for the recreation of the Town of Montagel. And we just always seem to say, "Well, yeah, we'd like to do that, but we can't." And that's the end of it. Well, it appears to me that there's probably some options there that might work out and we need to do our job and explore those. And then we need to face the citizens and say, "Here's the options and here, get input and then do some," instead of talking about it.
Well, if I may, let me address those two things first of all. Back to the grants for a minute. You can't file for a grant if that same grant is open. And that's what we're working through right now with the block grant. So my only point is, you're right, and I want to continue to work on grants. It's just that each grant has certain guidelines and requirements. There are some, when you get to utilities, that only come from an engineer, so to speak. There are others for town, like if a block grant is open, you cannot apply for another block. So my point is there are issues with each type of grant and what I think it still bears looking into. I just want to...
And again...
...address that about different grants in different areas.
And this person, this person that I'm thinking about is really going to be a traffic cop. And that's what I've called it to the steering committee. They're a traffic cop, kind of directing traffic in terms of grants and funding and everything like that. So, yep, understood.
Well, it's my understanding...
No, go ahead, finish the grant part.
It's my understanding that perhaps like our water district, we serve areas outside the corporate boundaries of the Town of Montagel. Other utilities have received grants from, the counties have applied for grants to improve water service, like through Big Creek, for instance.
By the county bill.
Well, the grant is in the name of the county and the benefit is, is granted county-owned, but they may be supplied the water by Big Creek or, and other communities that have done the same thing. That's why I think we need to look at that closely and see the priorities and like, for instance, the area outside the city limits out behind the housing project, that whole loop is basically, I think, a two-inch water line and from what everybody has said.
I think so.
The biggest majority of it. And it's, it cannot, it cannot service the existing number of customers that we have. And there's a lot of acreage of undeveloped property out there that is potential sites to help remedy a housing shortage in our community. But that will never happen until water is made available. And as we got into recently vocally here inside City Landers, TDEC will not allow a subdivision going out there, I don't think, based on existing water levels.
You might have to file for TDEC approval.
And according to the engineer, we would not get that approval because of pressure and volume and those things. And if we're going to truly address housing, affordable housing in Montagel, we're going to have to be able to supply water to those sites.
I believe there are water customers back there though, aren't there?
Yes, but I don't think, you know, if you can't come down here on Parker Street or whatever it is and get ten water taps, I'd bet money you can't get ten out there. And it's kind of, I think, it's, it's, the Town of Montagel has an exclusive right to be in the water business, no competition. And I think the Town of Montagel is obligated to provide adequate water service to all areas that it serves. And we cannot do that today. And we should be aggressively trying to remedy that problem. And so that's, that's my...
Well, that's something to consider. You're right.
Time on that.
There is no easy solution, as you know. There are certain TDEC restrictions that we have to follow, like we cannot build a second lake, we cannot do this. The commissioner said getting grant for a third water tower.
Well, and I understand all that, but it's like, but it seems like it's not important to us to try, like the housing shortage. And we all say, "Yeah, there's housing shortage, kind of like the ballpark, yes, danger, but you know, nothing we can do about it." Well, there's housing shortage, yeah, but there's nothing we can do about it. And...
Well, that would be up to the individual landowners.
Well, it is now and that's not working. And I feel like what the vision I have for the Town of Montagel should be changed a little bit and that we are going to take a new direction, for instance, I'll use housing, that we're going to identify and try to negotiate with the private sector to have a partnership that they would build affordable housing and not the greed factor of building hackneyed dollar homes, but build housing for blue collar workers. And if we do that in partnership, we're going to have to provide utility services. Everybody says, "Oh, let the developer put that in." Well, they're not going to do that on that kind of a home. They will do that in a gated community. They have done that, but there's a profit motive for that. And I don't think it has been or is, it is not the priority of the city right now to aggressively have a plan of action to improve housing availability for working class citizens. And it kind of spinning off of that. It's getting to the time of the year where typically we've had a wet due, but it's going to get to the point where the water stops going over the spillway. I think we need to aggressively monitor that and buy and manage the water contract with Tracy City and do that as soon as water stops flowing, you know, over the spillway and not wait until we think we're, you know, we're fixing to run out of water, which is...
Well, as you know, we've discussed that and we're working with Tracy City as our neighbor, which was suggested to buy water from them, which we are starting to do regardless of the level of the lake. But that's something that we're looking at, as you know, through contract. But there is a lot of consideration for that. My favorite question with affordable housing is what's affordable? And when I ask some of these people that are building homes, they say three to four hundred thousand. Well, that's not affordable to, as you cite, the blue collar worker. What is affordable? Two hundred dollars a month, six hundred dollars a month, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of arithmetic that needs to go into those housing plans.
Well, there is. You can't build, you can't build a, you can't build a four hundred thousand dollar home in Montagel, they have no property. And if you have the property to build it, there's no water to go to it. If you've got a guy wanting to build ten units down there, it's not Parker Street, where is that? Going off the hill where nobody used to be there. What's the name that street?
Miss Cawthorne, I think.
Yeah. Anyway, ten units. Now, it might not be the best fit and, but if it's zoned, if it meets the regulations and even if it's just five units, the Town of Montagel is in the water business. We need to provide water to customers that want to buy water from us or we need to get out of the water business. Because if, if, if somebody wants a tap and they can't get it, they can't go to AT&amp;T and buy water from them. So what is their land worth?
Well, as you know, we've done rate studies and capital improvement plans and this is a part of it, but to provide water where needed is a very costly proposition. Either no pipe or upsizing pipe, so...
And it was possibly for people that's got water today that had it put in thirty years ago. And I think it's time that we, we, we change how we do business in regards to the water system.
And as you know, that'll take a lot of study, but you're right. I'm not opposed, it's just you have to pay for it, as you know, so...
Okay. Well, moving around on, the water hydrants, I've noticed, looked like they had been grown up and hadn't been maintained, but I noticed today, I guess, I come out on one road and it looked like they had been, been worked on, John. It had, had... What, what, you wrote something? Okay.
That's where the fire department, when they get their water flows for ISO.
Well, a couple of years ago, they looked real neat. You go around, air fire hydrant, man, they were painted, they were, we needed and...
And the fire department has done that, but we also retained in the past, and when I get a final contract, I'll present that from a Rogers Group, not the concrete stone folks, but Rogers, somebody that does hydrant maintenance and does all the required testing for ISO ratings. So it's due, that comes up every three to four years, I forgot exactly. And we're in that cycle, so we'll be doing that over the next several months.
I've got a couple of things that constituents have contacted me about. I don't know if I can, one was out here at the bridge going out Tressel Road that goes over the interstate about loose rocks and stuff being up near the edge of the, of the button up there that looks like, you know, could be kicked off on the oncoming traffic or actually shouldn't be there. Is that our street department that would handle that, Mayor, or is that...
No, I think that's, well, I have to check, but I was told it's not City, State, County or State.
Okay. Well, I would ask that you see if the police department might go out there and looking at that and filing a report with the city just about their evaluation of that from a safety factor there, because I think...
Is that Tressel Road?
Yes.
It's, it all comes from that quarry down there that Rogers Group uses. The Rogers Group sand pit that's down there.
Well, it looks like, I mean, there's rocks laying right at the edge and you wonder, but anyway, I think we need to be proactive on it and that if you would have, see if the police department go out there and just file a report back to you evaluating that situation and then we would have something on file in case there is an incident.
Why do you even go down there once you get the police review, so?
Okay, okay. Thank you on that. We talked a little bit in workshop, I think, about the donor of a US flag pole and wanting the potential of doing service flags for other branches of service. I would like to see us make that something that we work on here in the coming short term and...
Well, we put those out on, to certain occasions, but...
I'm talking about big flag pole and then like Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Air Force.
Yeah. But the big flag pole was considered for Greenway, as we call it, and the beautification committee thought it would be too large for that or Park or Hannah Pickett Park.
Well, maybe we didn't get a smaller pole.
Well, the one that was donated was not a smaller pole.
Well, I asked, they said that we could sign, you can sign it off, is what I'm saying.
No, that, thank you, but we'll look at that. What would you, what's your suggestion where to put the flag pole in the...
Well, I think we need to have input from the citizens and see, ideally they're used in parks or open spaces that have high visibility where people can see them. I don't have any particular place I think it should go. I would be interested to hear what the residents think and do that. And then had a couple of inquiries about, on the T-Dot Bridge thing, when it's supposed to start next year and part of that is going to be Mountain Goat Trail too.
Yes.
And I don't, I think I need to get a copy of this stuff, but it's my understanding that the city has a contract with Mountain Goat Trail about maintaining the Mountain Goat Trail at our expense. Is that, is that your understanding?
I had heard that, but I also heard there are volunteers that were going to do that. And then the question is, what are we maintaining? We've removed some trees that were in the way and some branches, but we do not have a regular patrol of Mountain Goat Trail, no.
So you're saying you don't know if there is such a contract?
Correct. I don't know if there's such a contract.
So I would like to see us inquire and make that available and see on existing and then on future expansion, what the, what the agreement is, if anything, and what that potential cost is and look at that. And I'm not necessarily opposed to it or support it, it's just I've been asked to explore that and it makes sense that we should know what's going on there.
I understand there is one, if there is, I haven't seen it and I'm not familiar with the terms other than what I was told. And I'm on the search for the contract.
And then this, this issue is not from a constituent, it's from me. I would like to be, I guess, told about holiday pay and like the other day for Juneteenth, we closed for Juneteenth and the day after Juneteenth?
Yes.
And why did we do that?
That was my fault, just because it was a Thursday going into a Friday. So I thought it would be a little added bonus for the employees.
Did every employee get that day off of time?
Full-time, yes.
Okay. Is it true that like if a police officer had to work Juneteenth and the day after Juneteenth, that they receive overtime pay as well as the water plant operator or sewer plant operator?
Juneteenth is a national holiday. Those that work got overtime. The day after, they got regular pay.
Okay. And I would like for us, probably I guess have a workshop, I guess what, Grant says, throw it out there for feedback, I guess, would be the best thing. Previously, we used to approve a holiday calendar of paid holidays and like, for instance, one time you had to, in order to be paid for a holiday, if you were scheduled to work the day before, I think the university is this way now, employees, if you had to work, if you were scheduled, you had to work your regular schedule in order to be eligible for the pay for vacation night.
I'm not familiar with that policy.
So I'm assuming we don't have that policy.
Not today, but...
Okay. So if I worked for the Town of Montagel, I could took June the eighteenth off as a sick day or whatever and got paid for June nineteenth and June twentieth and then been off the weekend and then took another sick day on Monday and then I could have went to Florida.
As far as those sick days were accrued, yes.
Okay. Well, I would like for, I guess...
Well, we can look at that with the overtime and that whole package, like in that workshop.
And then it seems to me like, I know it's standard practice when you say full-time employees, but then we look at some of our part-time people, I would like for us to discuss that about the part-time people as well on eligibility for compensation, like for instance, convenience center. I'm assuming those were closed on June nineteenth or Juneteenth, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Was it closed the day after Juneteenth?
I don't know often. I believe that they were open then.
And it doesn't appear to me that we, that we treat, we have the same standards for all employees... all employees, and I know there's not supposed to be on certain situations on part-time versus full-time.
Right.
And, but I think when you look at overtime, you look at holiday pay, if you look at all that stuff, that's part of the total compensation package. And we all say, our employees, we value them, and we want, you know, to better pay, but I think we also need to say, and here is our benefit package. And here's what the position pays, and how close are we to where we need to be?
Fine. I understand all of that. The other part of the problem is we have a lot of competition. As recently as today, I understand two employees were contacted to go work for them instead of the town of Montague.
Well, that's, yeah, it's always been that way.
But that's fine, but there's a limited labor pool, as you know. So if somebody leaves, we try hard to replace them with quality workers.
But the sky's not the limit on what we do.
No, no, the sky's not the limit. We certainly can't compete with the state or the counties, but there are other factors involved that I'd be happy to discuss with you in the workshop.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I think that's enough, I give it up. Can you read my old letter?
Here you go. Got me help? Is there anything else?
I don't have any.
Okay. Then, under Old Business, I'll accept a motion to accept on second reading, ordinance 07-25, the budget amendment. Is there a motion to accept on second reading?
Can you briefly kind of give us a overview of this?
Well, that's in your packet. Do I have it handy?
I just have a quick question. I'll make a motion to approve it, if we want to move forward in that discussion.
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
And then, just real quickly, what was that, 20,004 again? I just, was that just a shifting of?
That's the street lights.
That's the street, okay. The street lights, okay. Thanks.
And this is on 025?
It's 07, yeah, 0725.
Twenty thousand dollars on increase on highways and streets?
That's for the street lights.
And then decrease the revenue, $65,000, I mean, increase revenue, $65,000. And that can be general fund revenue, like sales tax, liquor tax, or is that, could be grant, or?
That's a grant.
Okay. And is that a pass-through grant that we're not actually dispersing?
It's for Imagine Montague.
Okay, okay. So it's one of those that was filed in the name of Montague for a project associated with the town of Montague?
Would Imagine Montague go through the lender first?
Yeah, they actually gave us $65,000.
That was money that was given to us directly.
And then, Parks and Recreation, you have $5,000? A $5,000 increase, and a $5,000 decrease in fund balance.
Any other discussion on 07-25? All those in favor of approving on the second reading, ordinance 07-25, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed? It's approved. Second reading of the budget of 2025 to 2026? We have that in your packet, that's been discussed. Is there a motion to accept on second reading, the budget?
I'll make a motion of accepting the budget for 2025, 2026.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
And again, what was, these were some shifting funds?
What do you mean shifting funds?
Oh, I'm looking, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, looking at the wrong thing.
Any other discussion on the budget of 2025, 2026? Go call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. That's about it. Second reading of budget 09-25, opposing budget amendment. Is there a motion to accept that on the second reading?
I'll make a motion to accept it on second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion?
Again, just explain, remind me what this is again? I know we've gone through it.
I'm assuming most of this on increasing is because we had went over budget from the 24, 25 budget then?
Yes.
And then the state and federal grant of $50,000, is that a direct?
That's Mountain Goat pass-through, isn't it?
That's a pass-through.
For Mountain Goat Trail? And then, but everything else is just where, we did not target the budget from last year. And revenues were, we'd have to look at our financial statements, see where we are on revenue, but to your knowledge, there's no alarm bells on revenue shortfalls?
None. Okay. Any further discussion on 09-25?
Just real quick question, the overages then on salaries for planning and zoning, for our departments, street departments, and things like that, what were those, is, does overtime compensation included in those overages?
No.
No? Okay.
But we knew what the contract was supposed to be with.
What contract?
On Southeast City Development.
There's no increase on that contract, that's not.
But how did we miss it so bad if we, if we had to increase it by $6,300 for salaries? Is there other salaries?
No, that's where we put the $65,000 for that grant, for that land hearse.
Okay.
We had to put it in planning and zoning, and I had to take a bill out of that, and that put it over. I had to pay a bill for that land hearse.
But it wasn't a salary, was it?
Well, that's definitely put it.
And then local planning service, $3,200. Was that something related to that?
Yep.
And contractual services, $6,500. Is that all to do with the planning dimension?
Yep.
So the budget we just passed, has accounted for that in the upcoming year, so we won't be doing this again?
Right. These are closing adjustments for the fiscal ending to date.
Right. But I'm assuming, with the exception of that grant thing, anything associated with the grant would not be in 25, 26. But this local planning service thing, a $32, or, yeah, $3,200.
So one of those tiny grants, which may or may not have been reimbursed yet, number one. Number two, there's conversation that there will be other grants along these same lines in the upcoming fiscal year starting tomorrow. So there will be some grant adjustments as we look at these.
But as I recall, that contract with Southeast City Development, it was a stated amount for the planner and their services, and then there was a separate billing for other services.
That's right.
And this is the other services?
We didn't use any other services from them, did we, last year?
No. We're just getting the budget settled through today, because tomorrow's a new one. We dealt with that in the workshop.
I get that.
I just don't think we'll offhand, but I'll be happy to pull the bills when we have them. But all of that was addressed as today.
It just seems strange that we would have missed salaries unless we hired somebody, you know, somewhere during the year, that wasn't accounted for in the original budget?
We'll take a look at that, but it could be that part of that is our ordinance officer's role.
Right, right.
Any other discussion on 09-25? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed? It's approved. Okay. Thank you all. Under New Businesses, Business Permits? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes, sir.
You're putting in for a food vendor, Quick Bites?
Yes, sir.
But that has not been approved by the planning commission, has it?
No, I mean, does a food trucker have to be go to the planning community?
That, as far as, yes, where it's going, and is it in or out of the city limits, do you know?
It's in the city limits.
It's in the city limits? We'll check tomorrow night to see what's required. Lovely, the plan for a food vendor, vendor permit?
A food trucker?
And, I'm sorry?
It's a food trucker, just like the Taco Bell, a food trucker, and like Chris, that's up down the highway here.
And that's part of the food truck ordinance that we're looking at? Travis, you have something?
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Kilgore regarding this, so this is just going to be a food trailer, a food truck, food service truck, just as everybody else has up here. Rodney had mentioned the food tour, but he's not prepared to move forward with that yet. He's trying to get that to the planning commission by later date. I told him it better have to go through the planning commission side. He's aware of that. This is simply a food truck.
Is this a permanent food company?
No.
No, this is a mobile food truck. He's showing the documentation on it. He's got permissions to be over at Colton's, he, there's a few others in town, and he's got written signatures and permissions on it, and I've not gotten these health, you know, all these health inspections and stuff to create the file on it yet, but I'm aware of what he's trying to do.
In your opinion, does it meet our current regulations?
I mean, he's just like all the rest of them, if you're right. That's, that's the way I look at it, is.
Well, then my only guidance would be that it meets health department permits or whatever, Mr. Warrior, is that one?
Okay.
Right? Where are you hooking up for utilities? Is there, why?
You don't want.
I don't understand.
I got my own portable, everything.
Fine.
Right.
Okay.
And is this staying in the same spot? Are you going to, is it coming and going, or?
Are you going to stay, be in the same spot, when I have it there yet?
Who's the good?
Me.
Alderman, what's your pleasure?
I think, Captain Harvey can sit pretty like all the previous ones, Paco, Paco, and all the rest of them.
You're the owner of this land?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Taco, Paco was on land.
I just use that as a supposed to go here.
Well, I think that was owned by the owner, that's why they were there.
But they're going down by Lowway Market, they don't own that property.
No, and that's a lease.
And that's the algorithm, just traveling around to different places, they don't own them.
That's why I ask, is it permanent or mobile? And it sounds like it's permanent.
I don't think this is anything to vote on. I think Mr. Kilgore, unless it's just something that he needs to pay the food truck fee at the city hall, and, I mean, that's where I'm at, we're not voting on the others.
He's not?
This isn't an eligible vote, I don't think, he's coming before you for, just for a mobile food truck. He's just going to be a food truck, just like the rest of them.
So we have, we have no action right now?
I don't think so, no. We don't vote on all of this.
So he can go get a, he can go, whatever county, he's going to be sending sales tax.
Yep. I spoke to him about the sales tax report. He is licensed and addressed in Montague, so I can guarantee the sales tax will come back to this town. That's the best, that's my bet, even though I'm chasing sales tax.
Well, we're in it only because we approved business permits, that's right.
You're not going to put that down on the text note, where you're going to build text notes?
No. He's trying to make fun of you.
Can we stay focused, and I'll accept the motion? I accept the motion on to accept or not accept the business license that Mr. Kilgore has filed for?
I thought, hang on, I heard just a second ago, we have no action on this, or do we?
Well, so if you approve the business permit.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
I'll make that motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
A minute.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed?
Okay. How much is the permit now? I just go to the city hall and buy the permit?
A food truck permit, $100,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is someone here from the Mexican restaurant on 10 West Main Street?
Yep.
Okay. 10 West Main is where Open Smoke used to be on the corner, is that the parcel?
Yes.
Okay. And what are you doing there, and when you opened, and what are your plans?
So right now, it's under renovation to get up to code and all the stuff that needs to be done to the building, so I'm not sure an opening date, but we're looking to get a permit, I guess is what we need to do. I'm not exactly for sure what I need right now from y'all, so.
Mr. Warrior?
Yeah, spoken, spoken. I've actually worked with them for the past few months. All of their electrical and stuff's been redone and re-cooled and properly inspected at the state. And right now, we're working on the ventilation hood and the suppression system, and the ansel system. They're, they're, they're working over there. I think they're, understand that they're going to have to get a certificate of occupancy as far as, you know, getting ready for public occupancy, building, I mean, a business permit is part of this endeavor. So I look for them to make, to make a standard as far as they count so far.
So it's a complete kitchen facility and restaurant operation?
It is, it's just a local restaurant. You guys want to ask what their dinner and what they're serving, and.
So it'll be an eating restaurant?
It'll be an eating restaurant, and maybe a bar and grill. So we're, a bar and grill, so, yeah.
Just curious, what type of food are you looking at?
Mexican.
Oh, Mexican, okay.
Now, the only question I have is, do we grant the permit after the CEO? That's up to you all. You don't have an open date or anything?
Not yet.
Open?
Not yet.
You want to set this aside until there's a CEO on the minute, or do you want to?
We gave Paco Bell there before they ever got a certificate of occupancy. They were open and had business when the council voted on there.
Well, theirs was in the fixed building that had the certificates of occupancy, is my recollection, but what do we all want to do? Just make the motion one way or the other, and we'll vote on it.
I would like a motion we approve it contingent on the building inspector issuing a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion? Thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, just real quickly, I mean, we need to internally look and see, I mean, what, it sounds like our process might be a little bit upside down. If they're going to get a permit, if they're going to spend all the, if we're going to hold off on not doing this, and they're going to go spend this money, and then somebody decides that we're not going to give them the permit, then they're screwed out of a bunch of money. So I mean, we kind of need to, I would assume that any of these permit applications are contingent on them meeting all the requirements to get occupancy, or whatever else they need to do, which comes through Travis. So this is, this is just saying, yes, if you meet all the requirements, you move forward? Is that right, Travis?
Normally, the way I play cards is, that's the last thing before we go.
This is?
Yes. We get a sort of occupancy, we make sure all of our construction and our finals are completed, and we're ready for public occupancy on last API stake, and fire stake, code stake, then we come to report to the commission, and rather than report to the organ, we move on to our business.
All right. Seems like we ought to make that clear to the, to any future applicants about, about what the steps are. I mean, I don't have a problem approving it based on this, the contingency, but in the future, I think we probably need to look at making this a little more, yeah, a little more reasonable. Sorry, that, sorry, you're hearing a discussion that's not about you guys, this is about something else.
No, no, I mean, that's why I say, we didn't know exactly what, you know, what the procedure was as far as being here for this.
Just like, it's going to be like our first business, so we are working on it. We talked to all the attorneys and all that, and we're working all the courts and everything, and we tried to fix all that, and we already fixed it, so.
Okay. Can I have the application back, please?
But you understand the motion that I made is, you must have a certificate of occupancy from the city before.
You can open that first.
Yes, because I came here for the, like, transferred all the utilities and all that, like water bill and all that, and she told me like, oh, you have to fill up this form, and you have to come this day for the business permit and all that, and, yes.
Just so you understand, we're under a constant review of policies from previous administrations.
Okay.
And as we find things, we try to fix them.
Yeah, okay.
So right now, you know, a little bit of confusion with the prior system, and all of these people are dedicated to fixing things as we find issues, so.
Yeah.
It's nothing personal, it's just trying to come up.
No, I'm just like, I'm just, my, my.
Thank you. No, I understand your.
So you're having a bar and grill, correct? A bar?
Yes.
Did we go to the alcohol board already on that?
No, as far as talk the people here, they told me like, I have to go to the state first, and I get the permit first, and then I have to go to this, then I have to come to the city. So are we gonna apply for the state, the permit for the bar and all that, and then we're gonna come to the city?
So we said we're approving, approving this with the contingency of something for now?
I don't have a motion.
So I get to vote on the motion, which has been seconded, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. Next business permit is Sandstone Chalet. Is anyone here for that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sam Jackson, Jessica Jackson. It's a, it's a short-term rental.
And short-term is less than 14 days?
Correct.
And is it bed and breakfast or just a home that's?
Just a home.
Just a home. It's been operating for the last, we purchased it from the existing owners, it's been operating for the past two years. We have a child coming to Swanee and the ball, so we're excited to spend some time up here, we hope.
And from time to time, you may rent it out short-term basis?
Yes.
Will you be using one of the short-term platforms like Airbnb or?
It's currently on Airbnb and VRBO, and the way they set it up is that they collect the taxes, and my understanding is that they remit those to the local authorities on a quarterly basis, and then at the end of the fiscal year, we should get a tax receipt from VRBO and Airbnb telling us how much they've remitted. In their breakdown, it shows how much they're supposed to remit to the city, town, for each spot.
Right. Yeah, I've seen that those, yeah, those taxes are included in there. My, my question again, that's you guys, is we're not, we haven't been able to put our finger on that, we're actually getting that money, so.
If we're paying you taxes, we're doing okay.
Yeah, yeah. If, and you all recognize that if you do take it off platform and you continue to have it as a short-term rental, that you have to report and pay that to the, to debit, to the city, right? Okay.
I think by the 20th of the month following the occupancy.
Okay. Thanks.
If need be. Do you have a problem sharing that before? I understand Airbnb does it. There's been some controversy of VRBO, or some of those others doing. Do you have a problem if we need to see it just to review just the VRBO portion?
No, not at all.
Whatever you'd like to say.
As you heard, we wanna make sure we're getting.
I'm figuring it out along with you, so absolutely, we've got information.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, Alderman? Is there a motion to accept the application? I'll make a motion to accept the application.
It's on Lorelai.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Welcome, Montegoal.
I've been here for at least three years, or four years, to get that right.
Luchin Sculpture Studio. My first question is, where is AB406 US 41?
It's actually next to the Capitol Monument property, Dean's property.
It's a piece of property you used to own there.
Is there a building there?
Yes.
Which, the monument building?
The metal building.
Oh, in the back?
Reason it has that address instead of West College Street is the entrance back there.
It's front on 41. You're absolutely correct, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm a subject matter expert on this.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Okay. What can you tell us briefly, Mr. Lay Analyze?
Well, this is, this is the first step that I've taken. I missed the memo on, the building permit is the last step, so still need to apply for a certificate of occupancy and everything.
Well, how do that as the landlord? So you're renting?
Yes, sir.
And you remain as the landlord, so?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, Mr. Landlord, do you have any comments to make on this rental?
Uh, no. Technically, I, on the monument business, I currently sell some grants and stuff in there, I'm moving it out of there.
Okay.
And I have sold the business and the other building that you used to own, have rented it, and that guy was here last month and got a building permit.
Yes.
And then, he's gonna, just tell us what you're looking for.
Yeah, what business? So I'm an artist, primarily a stone sculptor, currently living in Chatham County, but looking to move here in August. And creating sculpture and artwork and having a gallery space to show it, show my own work as well as local artists and other artists regionally.
Okay. Travis, are you comfortable in working with the landlord and ultimately you should be the CEO?
A rhetorical question. You know, I've spoken, I've spoken to Dana about the building several times on several different occasions, and I, I think we're gonna be just fine, especially going with this. I think there's a lot of local residents that's, you know, excited about your, and.
Looking forward to it. Alderman, any questions for this tenant?
You said you're, you're doing, you do stonework and things like that, is that right?
That's right.
Would you be able to do any mobile, like, reetching of stuff that, in a block of stone that's already in a building?
Well, the lettering I do is chisel cut, it's a byhand V-cut letter, and I don't have a sandblast operation, everything I do.
So you do, you can do chisel cut on site?
Mm-hmm. Which has nothing to do with the?
Sorry, that has nothing to do with the city council, that's a personal, sorry, I'm sorry.
Open for business.
I'll accept the motion to accept the business permit as submitted.
I'll make a motion to accept the business permit as submitted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
As my good friend Nate Wilson said.
Damn right.
I might have a conflict of interest here.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
So therefore, do you recuse yourself?
Well, I think, Mayor, does the law require me to recuse myself or only to declare that there could be a conflict of interest?
You can declare that. I accept both, and I take your declaration. Therefore, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations. Please bear with us, it's a learning process for all of us. Okay, we've got a few more to do. First reading of ordinance 06-25, the food trucks. Is there a motion to accept?
I make a motion to defer this to, we have another workshop on it, or if it's not, if I can't do that, I just make a motion to reject it.
Well, you're making a motion to defer it?
Well, I'd like to do that, if that's proper.
That's proper. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Well. This is about the food truck ordinance, and we have some disagreement in some of the language, and we're trying to sort it out, just for everybody's thing. We're gonna sit down and have a workshop and go through this.
As was previously mentioned. Thank you. First reading of ordinance 08-25 on the engineering fee reimbursements. Is there a motion to accept?
I can make a motion to accept ordinance 808-25, engineering fees.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Approved on the first reading? You've seen the contracts for Southeast Tennessee Development District in your packets? There's no increase in their base charge? Is there any, accept a motion to approve the contract with Southeast Tennessee Development?
I make a motion we accept the contract with Southeast Tennessee Development.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. All those opposed? Two ayes and one no.
You gotta vote, no, you don't, yeah, you gotta vote. No, you don't.
I go, did it, I didn't hear, okay.
I'm a aye.
Thank you, I will sign that. Approval of an invoice for the CDVG?
Travis, Travis had a question on that. Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. On your food truck orders, I was talking to Ms. Reed and Miss, did we table that?
Yes. It's deferred to the further workshop.
Should, should we hold off on issuing, I mean, I don't know if this is the right time, time to ask, on issuing any further food credit permits until we get this resolved? Should we?
After tonight, that would probably be a good idea, but.
I don't think you can do that.
We can do that?
You can't do that. You'd have to operate under the existing ordinance we have.
Okay. Well, I'm anticipating a rather rapid workshop. We're gonna put that to bed.
I might come in tomorrow and get a permit for a food cut.
Oh, I agree. We'll go, we'll go, I said, correct it.